I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Ogden Act Community Schools Board of Education on Monday, June 24th at 7:00 PM. Please rise for pledge allegiance and the movement of science.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
William Hayden Bree.
Here.
Phil Clark.
Here.
Don Highstreet.
Here.
Amy Wood.
Here.
Dennis Crisco. Nicole Unring. Here.
Thank you. First up, we have our recognitions as presentations, and we're going to start with a science curriculum presentation from Mrs. Anderson.
So, thank you for having me today. So, I'm really excited to present on-
Okay, wait, one minute.
Really excited to present on high school curriculum, chemistry and physics. I'd like to introduce Eric Frank. He's here with me, and he's going to tell you a little bit about what he's been doing. He is teaching chemistry and physics in the high school, and has really spent the year meeting with Minutereau, our RISA consultant, and looking at different curriculums, and even being able to go and observe some. So, he's very excited about talking to you about Open Saiet for chemistry and physics. So, a little bit about the process. So, like I said, we were working with RISA. Eric got a late start in Ogden Act this year. Eric got a late start in Ogden Act this year, having an academic school year started. So, he really hit the ground running, and so we had been to come out and say, here's what we currently have, what can I do to help you? And so, he started to look at different curriculums. Open Saiet was one, Sabas, and Houghton Mifflin were also some, and Patterns. So, as you can see, with the science standards moving to next generation science, they're very difficult to meet all of those science standards, which is why it's taken so long for a high school curriculum to come out that has actually been rated all green in categories, because they have to hit so many different elements. Science isn't like it was before. It's not a sit and get. They really want the kids to be the ones doing the discovery. So, what we found was Sabas and Houghton Mifflin, they checked a lot of boxes, but they really took their curriculums and kind of retrofitted them to try to make the standards, instead of making a curriculum that embodied the standards and the philosophy of the standards. Eric went and observed Open Saiet in a high school classroom, and was able to ask questions, get feedback from the current teacher currently using that. Will let him talk about that experience a little bit and what he saw.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me. My experience was very eye-opening to see this curriculum in person. You know, so many of our kids are used to this old way of, you know, seeing facts, memorizing, doing a test, moving on, and that's really not how the world works. And we've been trying to tell these kids that, that, you know, an employer's not going to pay you to look some stuff up that they could look up themselves, memorize it, and come back and talk about it the next day. So, it's really the curriculum focuses on getting kids to work together, which is kind of a skill that's been lost over the years with the, you know, social media and things like that. So, going to this classroom was just awesome to see these groups of kids working together. They each have their own job in their groups, so even when one kid gets it, they still have to make sure that the other kids in their group understand what's happening, you know, what they've discovered for that particular day or lesson. So, everyone has to teach each other, kind of all agree on it, and then they use a lot of whiteboards to present, so their group can share, and then they see what the other groups share. And it's really encouraging, because it, like I said, promotes them working together. And it's a lot of questions that don't have an answer. So many of these kids, you know, they just want to know, what's the question? What's the question? So, I can hurry up and look it up, you know, Google search it, and tell you what the answer is. So, this science curriculum is great, because it's asking questions that don't really have an answer. For example, one of the first units is about pollution in the oceans and rising carbon dioxide levels in the oceans, you know, and we don't yet know the answer to that question, but it's a scientific problem that, you know, people, scientists around the world are working on right now. And it gets the kids to kind of share their ideas and talk about, you know, what's happened, what's going to happen, you know, they're making predictions. And, you know, these presentations that they're basically giving on these whiteboards, they see that, hey, we have a totally different idea than that group who has a totally different idea from that group, but realizing it's okay. It's okay to have different ideas, and for our group discussion to have gone down a certain path, and yet you're still listening to these other groups talk about what discoveries they made. So, it was really awesome to see just kids working together, working to solve a common problem, and it's really, you know, what our kids need in today's society. You know, it's, like I said, it's not just memorizing facts, you know, taking a test. It promotes them working together to problem solve, which is kind of a, this skill has been lost.
Thank you. So, Open Saiet talks about the approach, and really, it's a discovery approach. That's how it aligns, and that's how it supports. So, in that discovery approach, though, all the materials, it's what they call crosscut. So, you're going to get your engineering standards in there, you're going to get some of your earth science standards in there that are spread out through all the ways. You're going to get that inquiry and discovery in there. So, they have these phenomenon, they call, how they start it, and it's a discovery-based process that the kids dig into, and they go a mile deep into that process and how they're learning and how they can create, but not only that, how they can get their voice across too. So, the highlights of this curriculum, one, it's all green in ed reports. That's huge. So, when it's out there being actually researched, it's one of the few that are all green that hit the mark on what we need to do for our state standards. It's designed for the K-12 framework of science education, which means that they took the national next-gen science standards, and they said, what are these really about? Because we've been training teachers how to teach different for a long time now with these standards. And so, this curriculum was designed with that in mind from the floor up by science researchers, so scientists, hand in hand with educators, science educators, so both of them. It's teacher facilitated, which means it's thoughtfully thought through with that phenomenoned. The teacher leads it, but the kids are really the ones doing the work. They're doing the investigating, the collaborating, and the sharing, all of those ideas to get their understanding. It's, of course, collaborative. Eric already talked about that. It's investigative for, so they give a world problem right now, something that's meaningful to them that they can research and get behind. All students are able to participate, so that way every student feels that they have a part in it. And for the teachers, it's easily editable. It's what they call an open-ended resource, so there is not a charge for the curriculum per se. The materials are out there. We can print them, we can do them, we can do whatever we want, but you have to purchase, like, the kits for the, not through them, I mean, you can go get it one thing at a time, but to do all the experiments and everything like that. But they have put this out there, trying to just get science instruction that much meatier, that much better for all to be able to get a hold of. So, that's huge. You have this handout there, and with that handout, it really, the pages behind it that you have really explain how the lessons go. So, a unit would start with the acreage phenomenon, and then you see how you follow that path through the process, and they always get the questions answered, but there's always a new board with what couldn't be answered to, like what other questions do we have from this? So, that's how that goes. I put this link in there so you can see the high school scope and sequence. I think it's important to know that the earth science standards are scattered through, they're embedded in the chemistry, biology, and physics lessons. So, we have them in the physics and chemistry lessons here. Biology also knows which ones that they need to pick up that make sense with biology. And this has that cross-cutting, like I said, for the engineering standards to make sure that that's all scaffold in there as well. So, that link is professional development. I was really impressed with Open Science professional development. There is a ton of free on-demand, so anything that you want, and they have a collaborative network, so Eric could always tag in to watch something briefly on just a small topic. But they also have hands-on units, and I know you are signed up for one this summer as well, and is it a three-day course?
Yes.
So, he gets to go, and they actually walk through a lesson together with other, and then develop that network. In Ogden Act, we're a small district. You're the only physical science teacher, so having that network to get out there. And Eric found that training, and is like, this is something I need to go to, I want to go to. So, really impressed. That's in August?
Yes.
So, the cost. The cost is fairly, very reasonable, actually. So, for chemistry, for two teacher guides, 40 student journals, and the consumable and non-consumable kit, it's about $3,500. And same thing with physics, it's about $3,200 for all of those things. Shipping and handling's $1,000, which brings the total to $7,760. This, of course, is a one-year quote right now, because all of those non-consumable things will not need to be repurchased. We also really don't know if the journals will need to be repurchased. So, we bought them for this year to see, are we going to use them in full? Are there things that we want to add in? So, being that everything is free, we can print the pages that we want, we could print our own journal if we say, add in more. Eric's going to keep track of that this year and decide what he needs to make forward. So, anything else you'd like to add, Eric? I know you went and watched a teacher teaching MyStar that was using that same type of philosophy.
Yes, and that was exciting to build upon that, to think that, you know, the younger kids now in seventh grade are already kind of doing this type of learning, very promoting of working together collaboratively in groups. So, to transition to a new curriculum for chemistry and physics would be easier for them, because they're already used to doing that similar type of work where they're working in groups. It's not just teacher talking, here's, you know, an assignment, but it's teacher introducing the topic, kids working together in groups, and kind of discussing with each other. So, like I said, it was very exciting to see it in action.
Any questions?
How long has this been going on, this Open Science ed? When did they start?
Oh, it's been years. They've been getting it all together. They now have a full year, but they're still even coming out with, like, more physics unit in the fall. So, this is a collaborative group that they continue to work, they continue to update.
Schools in our area are doing this.
So, right now, I know Yale was piloting this, and I believe Port Huron was, are they piloting?
I think they were piloting.
So, Mina is bringing it to the county? This is the one that she stands behind, this one in Patterns, that meet all the-
So, we really don't like results yet. I mean, we know a couple of schools are piling it. We don't know, okay, at the year's end, we did it for a year, we did this, but we really don't know yet where all the science teachers are saying, man, this is the best thing since sliced bread. Or is it, I don't know, I don't know.
Right.
You know, I mean, I mean, on paper, so good. I know Alan, I could sit down and write an offense for basketball, we should win a state championship and score 200 points. I want, you know, on paper, it's beautiful, but I want, I'd like to know what's going on in the classrooms itself. You witnessed the day.
Right.
Next Gen has been out for a while, but they started with training teachers to teach differently, so they really spent a lot of time doing that. And then they hit the middle school curriculum. So, then they went after and tackled those middle school standards. So, they developed curriculum that met, that met next-gen standards in the middle school. Then it was easier to kind of bring along elementary. So, elementary's been brought along. So, high school is truly the last, because you're really getting in there with teachers that, they know their material, right? And having them teach differently than they've always taught is a tough sell. John, you're a high school, former high school teacher.
Yes.
It is a tough sell.
It's a tough sell.
So, I think getting them in there, and now that we have a couple that are actually rating green all the way across on ed reports, like I said, Patterns does, so does Open Saiet, now it's getting in those teachers' hands and having them actually embrace them and teach differently.
And if you go back and look at when they started talking about Next Gen coming, we were a spot right then where we knew we had to look at something different for curriculum, but again, it was, well, we didn't know exactly what it was going to look like, we didn't exactly know what it all entailed. So, we kind of skipped, and we waited, and we waited, and I think we finally got to the point where we feel like they've got a pretty good curriculum.
Yeah, the textbook that they're currently using in there is 20 years old.
I think the original publishing date was 1996, and I think we purchased it in 1999.
Wow.
Awfully hurt.
It's time.
So, in our case, I'm reflecting on the lower-level classes, when you do pilots and you have multiple teachers and things like that, in this case, it's literally these two classes taught by Mr. Frank.
It is.
So, and with the $7,000 investment, it sounds like we've been looking for the standards to get baked, and we're now comfortable. Would you consider this a pilot? Like, we're going to use it, and we could, if it didn't work out, would shift?
I would consider it more than a pilot. So, we have spent time researching and talking to the science experts. Now, we're only purchasing for a year, so after a year, if we go, oh, this is big, then of course we could pull out. But the nice thing about an open-ended resource is it allows you to change it, edit it, and make sure that it is meeting the needs of your population, your kids, and also what they need to do. We know a lot of jobs are out in that STEM field for these kids going on, and we want them to go in as prepared as possible. Chemistry and physics are huge backbones for those STEM careers, so we want that high level of learning in there, not just memorizing. So, this going with, like I said, the ed reports, what we actually watched, and Mina, who's actually working with the state science council on what, you know, is best.
And if you didn't like it, there's really only two options that meet, that check the boxes, or you'd go back to the same textbook I used in school.
So, the open-ended and being able to get whatever they have. So, if some, there's some new scientific discoveries or whatever, they have that, that can be being, start being taught, like, the minute that it's hot off the press.
Everything can be updated yet, unless the form's related and you have access to them.
That's cool.
It's like a year will add a new unit to the chemistry curriculum, and, you know, the next year will add a new unit to physics, so they're always adding new stuff in.
Do you see this being a shift to this open-ended resource type of thing, or is it only really working with science?
I, there's a lot of money to be made in curriculum, so I can't say, but it's nice when you have researchers in the science field working with science educators. And so, this is one of the few open-ended resources that are really good. So, there's a lot of thought, they've taken a lot of time to develop. This isn't just a group, you know, out there putting out stuff. This is a really strong-
I know there's like a push in higher levels, I didn't know if that was coming down.
It is, it is coming down. We'll see what the years ahead.
Is there a separate, is there a separate curriculum also for anatomy, biology?
There is through this, there is biology. Our biology teachers have adapted, they're using, oh, I can't even pull it off the top of my head now, but they're also using a curriculum that has met the national, they jumped on board right away.
Did they?
So, yes, so they already have a curriculum that meets the next-gen science standards as well.
Does this line up with IB? Does it have any effect on how IB works, or?
I don't think so. IB is its own curriculum, so it would be different.
So, it wouldn't be a part of that?
No, IB is worldwide, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
And this chemistry, in middle school, high school, is that, is there, you're going to be doing experiments, and I know that, I'm just saying, because high school, okay, we got two science rooms, but we don't have one for middle school, correct? I mean, are they, in the middle school, are they going to be doing, is it chemistry in the-
No, this is for high school.
This is all high school.
This is all high school.
So, we have the rooms that, you know, and we have experiments.
Yeah, so seventh eighth grade is using MyStar to meet science standards. And so, they have, they have a plethora of things. They hit some basic chemistry stuff, but they don't go in depth, they're laying a foundation.
Do the materials themselves lend to a hybrid-type schooling where they can work on it at home? Or is it more in-the-classroom oriented?
It's definitely in-the-classroom oriented. There's actually videos that are available too for students that are absent, because it is so collaborative with the students working together, but if they miss, you know, a few days in a row, they, they've missed a lot, you know, that group discussion. So, there are videos online that they can watch to catch up with, but obviously, we encourage them to, you know, be there daily as we would for any classroom, but it's definitely a very, you know, a curriculum that promotes working together in groups. It's not something where they're just off on their own doing work.
And when they're in the classroom doing the work, is it like Chromebook-based, or is it more printouts and/or just general, little bit of everything, a lot of collaborative?
It's a mixture. Like I said, they really like the whiteboards, where, you know, there might be a short little presentation to watch or a video to watch, and then they are trying to solve a problem. So, they're, you know, making a graph, for example, that they think, well, this is how they would graph the information, here's what we thought, and then, and this is just, you know, the one I was watching, that's why it happens. You know, so they all hold up their graphs, and they're all different, like, every graph looks different, because these kids thought, well, it should be this, and, you know, it's not to say that one was better than the other, but again, it helps open the eyes of the kids that, hey, there's more than one answer to a problem, there's more than one solution, you know, because we want them to stop thinking it's yes or no, right or wrong, that there are, you know, there's more than one way to solve a problem. And that's what this program is really all about, is encouraging them to work together and to realize, hey, I have an idea, you piggyback off my idea, add more stuff to it, and then you keep going around the group that way, so.
Well, it also is teacher-driven, so teachers can choose that it gets presented in any different way. So, the curriculum will lend itself to any type of a presentation. They could work together online, they could do it verbally, they could, you know, it's really student-led, but it's a-
So, you bring up a good question then. So, it's, he comes, I come, I come, I come, this and this, and we can do these things, but it all comes down to, well, why do he get an A and I got a B? I mean, how's that, how does this, if we're collaborating and doing things, or, and, you know, too bad you missed, you know, so much school, how does she catch up? But, you know, well, I don't, I don't know why. That's my question is-
There are assessments, there's also rubrics for, like, team rates and things like that.
Yeah, I mean, that's because, it all comes to bottom line, is some parents go, well, why did my youngster get a C+?
Right.
And how do you say, well, you know, yeah, we're in the wrong group.
And I will say, there is, like, less homework per se than-
Even there.
-what you would think, because, you know, we know homework is a challenging topic right now, because, you know, any worksheet you give the kids, they can Google that worksheet in three seconds and find the answer keys. I mean, all those things are out there, you know, for one person does it, and there's a Snapchat that goes out, and every kid now has the answers. So, that's the other cool thing about this, is it's, you know, they're doing this collaborative work in class, rather than, here's an assignment, go home, you know, maybe one person did it, and the rest all, you know, copied it from someone else, or just, you know, Google searched an answer and it found an answer key. So, by doing it in class, you know, the teacher is there to watch them, you know, obviously their cell phones are away, you know, if it was something where they needed the Chromebooks, they would have access to them, but, like I said, a lot of it is that discussion among those groups, you know, to share their ideas.
So, the curriculum is broke down into lecture and lab? So, when I look at chemistry, I'm looking at lecture, right? And then from lecture, breaking down through labs, is that how the structure of this works?
Yeah, the labs are integrated in, so, like I said, they'll start with a common problem, so, a real-world problem, I should say. So, the first one, like I said, is about, like, rising ocean temperatures and CO2 levels. So, then they talk about, you know, well, what is CO2? Why is the bubble rising? What are ways you could combat CO2? So, they do experiments. I know the one I saw when I went to watch this class, there was, you know, the kids were blowing their own breath, which is obviously carbon dioxide, into these containers, and they're trapping the carbon dioxide, and then they were trying to figure out the next day, which I wasn't there, but how could they lower the level of that carbon dioxide? So, it's using real-world problems that are out there, you know, climate change and CO2 levels in the oceans changing, and, you know, fish, and there's a lesson about the clams dying off because of acids in the waters. So, it's using real-world problems, and like she said, they integrate the earth science in there as well. You know, so it's different from the traditional chemistry course where, okay, here's the periodic table, and, you know, these are your halogens, and these are your, you know, alkaline earth metals, right? Remember what they have in common. So, it's very different from that. It's introducing real-world issues, how does that relate to chemistry, how is chemistry in the real world? Because, you know, everything we eat and drink, and, you know, the motions and makeup sets people use are all chemicals. So, it really gets them to think, like, yeah, these are everyday things that we're using, you know, how does this relate to the problem that we're trying to solve? And then, like I said, working together. So, there are, like I said, the experiments are integrated in. So, there's a problem, a discussion period where they talk about themselves, and then the teacher will bring them back, they share their ideas with the teacher. If they're way off track, the teacher kind of, you know, directs them to go down, you know, a better path, but then encourages the kids to revise what they've done.
Is this part of a, you know, I know we're talking green, but another point, so many things are going through my mind right now, is, like you said, well, global warming, is this, I don't know who backs this, or some who's, oh, we're all above global warming, we're all about this, as if there's other people out there saying, well, we're in cycles, you know, we see it all the time, you know, whoever comes up or who comes down, we get. Or is this sponsored by the Greens saying, oh, we're going to go all-electric, we've got to have electric cars, and we're going to try to, you know, do that? That's, is there a backing of this company or this curriculum? Something of that nature, is it just, hey, we're going to put it out there so you learn all this? Or are they trying to get you to a point and say, hey, we're so, we want solar power, we want wind power, when all this stuff? When people say, that's not the way to go, but is this what they're saying? If that's my question, I don't know.
It's backed by science researchers and educators, so they present facts, the kids do the discovery.
Okay.
There's not a political side to it, per se.
Good.
But the kids really do the reaching out and the discovery, and it's our job to lead them on where you get factual information, you know, what do you do with that factual information? You know, when you research, you can find both sides of the coin.
Oh, yeah, exactly. And they get the opportunity to see that.
So, it's really, how do you know it's good research?
Yeah.
How do you know? So, those are the things, because kids really have to learn to decipher information.
Good.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up, we have Mrs. Nikki Dugowski here to share an outdoor classroom update. Maybe I'll turn it over to Al first.
Yep, yep. For those of you that made it over to the bio blitz in the opening of the outdoor classroom, certainly was a fantastic day, and, you know, gets to a lot of thinking as to how we got to that point. I think when Nikki came and talked to us about getting this thing going, I'm pretty sure Nikki and probably her husband didn't know all the work and what would be, what this would entail, but just countless hours, and seeing that all come together on that day was just, it's kind of what education and communities about a little bit. And so, just wanted to again thank Nikki and asked her to come over here tonight, and then also have Jay DeBoer here tonight joining us. He got involved a little bit with finding out what we were doing out there and wanted to come by too. So, I'll start by turning it over to Nikki. She's got some slides and some information to share with you about the outdoor classroom project.
It's kind of good to go off the, off of that, because elementary's been doing next-gen standards for years, and it's all about discovery, and that's exactly what this is, is kids exploring, discovering. So, thank you for inviting me here today, Al. I'm here to give another update. I was here last spring, and a lot of progress has been made. Eagle Scout Garrett Cooper placed one of his many Owl boxes on site, along with creating an educational sign to share what he has learned with students for years to come. Friends of the St. Clair River has donated more than their time and educational expertise, but donated a wood duck box for our pond. This spring, a wood duck pair made it their nesting spot and laid four eggs. St. Clair Waterfowlers donated $2,500. That money was used to purchase educational signage along the trail. These signs were created by several of our high school students. The Rotary paid $5,000 to Jerry Martin for repairs to the sidewalk along our pond that was eroding. The Lions Club has helped tremendously with the removal of dangerous trees and have pledged to help all they can, with items that come up. The Chick-fil-A Leadership Group at our high school here will continue to support us. Uh, they were at our second annual Bio Blitz and the kids had so much fun. I see them coming next year. A new main trailhead sign was built by Chris Amiel's wood donated by Lumberjack and the sign was painted by Jan Stomati. Early spring, we had a massive windstorm and about 20 trees fell. It left me devastated. I put a post on social media expressing my sadness and the next thing you know, the lions came ready to help. But before they could do anything, community members, parents and former students came rushing to help. A huge shout out to Tom Tilly, Derek Gabriel, Jimmy Frank, Bill Siegel and his son Ben, Jesse Babson and his boys, Jeremy Pitts, his son Asher, and of course, my husband. Thanks to all of them. My husband sitting here has probably been my biggest supporter when it comes to helping me make this happen. He's taken down old signs, installed new ones, built and installed a new teacher podium and has spent many nights and weekends with me clearing brush. So I can see students all the way around the pond. Not my idea of a date, but. He truly is helping my vision become a reality. Our children too have had their hand on this project from helping my younger students. Photography and our son Griffin has helped with many physical projects that require some muscle. I just don't have. I work closely with our superintendent, thank you, Mr. Latos, July in our maintenance department in the renewal of our trail. We've scheduled meetings with organizations and continue to share the success of student engagement with him. Grosso Trucking donated 30 tons of limestone gravel to help us repair the low spots along the trail. Thanks to Chris Frank, a relative of mine who helped make that happen. They also gave us a great price on another 30 ton of gravel and filter that was used to fill along the sidewalk and cover the exposed drainage along, the exposed drainage pipe that we had there at the pond. I partnered with Scoreboard Amore, a local company, with some educational signage using actual photos that students took that day. Recently, I met with a local First Nation group to incorporate third grade social studies standards into the trail system. Thanks to Friends of the St. Clair River for helping share my story on social media, all items on my Amazon wishlist were purchased by community members. We now have nets and a dozen waders for students to get in the pond and explore what is living in the water. Special thank you to Melissa Kiebel, the education manager at Friends of the St. Clair River for all her help in this project from sharing ideas, providing materials and generating ideas for enhancing science lessons. This project has been featured in The Voice, The Times Herald and a local magazine called The Keel. This has brought positive attention to our district in many ways. Most recently, we had the Michigan Department of Education on site to feature the work being done at Elgin Quinn. I was asked to be guest of honor at the Friends of the St. Clair River's annual fundraiser called the River Bash. I was recognized as a changemaker in our county. Last month, I organized a grand reopening of the trail in my second annual Bio Blitz. Other than the bugs, it was a great day of learning and adventure. All 75 of my students were able to put on a pair of waders and explore. We had special visitors from locals and state governments. Thank you to Al Latos, Ryan Melrose, Brooklyn Lestage and Andy Galley for joining us. Mr. Artie Bryson and I are not finished. Phase two is underway. I currently am working with high school students who joined us for the second annual Bio Blitz. She loved it and asked if she could be of any help. She will be helping me with the First Nation signage. I have an Eagle Scout that is working on creating a trailhead map sign and, uh, will be working to help me build and repair the back loop that we haven't touched yet. A lot more gravel is in need. Artie and I recently wrote to a state senator seeking some grant ideas and opportunities to help us with maintenance in this area. As all of the work has been done with my husband's tractor and tools. Not only did he help with all the labor on this project, he helped with our baseball field as well. Let's give him some recognition he deserves. Give it up for Jen. Countless hours were spent here helping make this a great place for our students. Last year, my students and I were awarded the Green Guardian Award at the St. Clair County Earth Day Fair for our efforts and dedication to environmental leadership. But I truly believe that was an award for all of us, students, school, community and Thump Coast region. It's been a massive project for a fifth grade teacher and I'm thankful for the support of my administrator, Mrs. Lestage. Give it up for her. And Mr. Latos. To the local organizations that have helped me in many ways. It is truly happening because we are working together in school and community. Any questions?
Great job.
I have a question.
Yes.
Always good. Oh, it's a, we went through the other day. I took Colson. We went by the pond. Pond looks beautiful.
Thank you.
What kind of fish? You see the bass coming up?
Yeah.
All during the sun. There's tons of bass.
Yeah, I caught a little, one of my students was fishing there the other night and there's bluegill. There's.
Oh, my gosh. I couldn't believe the fish. You never, we never planted anything in there, did you? Never.
It's really not deep either.
No, there's a lot of fish in there.
Um, and our water, water quality is good in there. We did a water quality test with Friends of the St. Clair River. So that was good. Uh, kids were able to see life cycles because we go out there often. So they're able to see, um, you know, the different phases of all the insects and creatures out there.
Yes.
So cool.
It is. It's cool. It really is. It's.
Great job.
Class set of waders is pretty cool.
Do you take donations? I have a couple.
I would love some donations. So we have a couple big things. Um, gravel is a huge need, a huge need. Uh, that whole back loop, we haven't even touched yet. Uh, the Eagle Scout will be working on, on creating some fundraising opportunities for that. But just maintaining the area. I mean, we put, put the hurton on our tractor and our tools and we don't mind keeping, keeping it up. But we, you know, need some help with things like that.
Do you have waders or do you for the?
I have my own waders and I have a class set.
You have a class set.
Well, I'm 12.
So we need someone to drop some off.
I really don't want more than 12 kids in the pond. It's a lot of kids. We had a couple call in. We had to bring their waders.
Okay, we've got waders. Yeah, we've got those too. Your waders are good.
I mean, I won't turn them down. I'll take them.
Okay, I didn't.
You never know if you get a hole in them, I suppose. Any other questions?
Again, from the school's behavior, it was just a wonderful thing to see and couldn't, and, and the way it turned out was just on the day of to just the perfect weather. It was such a good day.
It's a really cool day of learning. So the Bio Blitz part wasn't as, as, didn't run as well as I would have liked it the second time because the bugs were so horrific. Usually the kids get out there and they're rolling logs over and seeing what's living. We had to do that on the outskirts. I'll, I'll do it a little earlier next year before those vicious things come out.
Way to make Elginak look good.
I also have, uh, like I mentioned, uh, Jay DeBoyer here. There's not, you know, if you're following the budget talks about, there's really not much going on in Lansing this week at all. So I'm sure Jay's got all kinds of time, but no, actually it's quite the opposite. It's like, um, hours and hours each day of what they're going through. And I really appreciate Jay coming up. Appreciating. Special day for us. Jay, I'll turn it to you.
Yeah, please. Uh, thank you, board members. Thank you. Thank you for what you do. Uh, very appreciated from, from a fellow Muskrat. Um, President Clark, thank you. Uh, Al Latos, Superintendent, thank you. But, you know, I think what we're seeing today, frankly, I, here's what I've said and John, back me up on this. What I've said about our beautiful town is that there is a lot of really, really great people in this town, right? But it's when a leader can stand up and pull those great people together is when you really accomplish things, right? And I think the Degowskis are a fantastic example of the people stepping up and being able to pull the individuals in our community together to accomplish something like this. And without that kind of leadership, right? What would we be and why would we be, right? That's, that's, I think, a very important question. So how did this start with me? One of the interesting things was, you know, I got this packet of letters from like 75 students, right, sent to my office. Um, and again, you know, when I'm in Lansing, it's, it's, I'm very proud of my hometown. And, and it's frankly, one of the reasons I'm there, uh, is to best represent my hometown. And so when I got that pack of letters, read through them all, um, it was just one of those moments where you, where I said, this is just fantastic. We gotta do a little bit of recognition.
Should I tell them our letters? So that's part of the next gen standards again, is that, um, the, the kids identified an invasive species in our outdoor classroom and it's, and it's a plant that's currently being sold that won't be going lows. And the kids are like, why are we selling this plant if it's taking everything over? So they wrote to Mr. DeBoyer asking him to ban the sale of this invasive species that's taking over our outdoor classroom.
So we do actually in the state of Michigan, we have a number of plants that are banned because of, because of the invasive nature of them and how they overtake the natural habitat. Uh, you know, one of the autumn olive, which frankly was brought into Michigan by the Michigan Department of Transportation for Soil Erosion Control, has now taken over environmental spots and it's now a banned species in Michigan. You can't bring it in. You can't buy it. You can't plant it. Frigmites, as we're all aware, I don't know how you ever get rid of those. We attempted here in Clay Township a few years back to do that and we weren't very successful. We were successful for a while. And then the, uh, what is the Japanese barberry, right? That's the other one. So, so first I just have a letter that I want to give to, uh, Mrs. Degowski. Just recognizing what her classroom did, mentioning her students, thanking them and just a little recognition on that. All right. So then what I did is I, I drafted a special tribute, uh, to Jim and Nikki Degowski. And if I may.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, to Jim and Nikki Degowski, let it be known that it is with strong sense of admiration for all the sacrifices they have made on behalf of the people of Elginak and the surrounding area, that we salute Jim and Nikki Degowski. Jim and Nikki have spent countless hours repairing and rehabbing the Elgin Quinn Nature Trail and Outdoor Classroom to make the trail walkable and the classroom functional for all who visit. We, along with the residents of the Elginak area, thank these wonderful individuals for their efforts. The Elgin Quinn Nature Trail and Outdoor Classroom has been uncared for and rundown for years until Jim and Nikki Degowski stepped in. Along with the help of the Elginak Lions Club, Elginak Rotary Club and the Friends of the St. Clair River amongst others, incredible work has been done to greatly improve the area. The trail signs were in need of rehab. So Jim took down the old signs, repurposed most of the posts and reset them for new signs. The classroom includes benches donated by the Elginak Rotary Club and a wooden podium. It is surrounded by several walking trails that were in need of clearing. Jim and, Jim and Nikki were up to the task. Through the tireless efforts of Jim and Nikki Degowski, the Elginak Nature Trail and Outdoor Classroom have been brought back to being fully functional. Nikki holds many class, Nikki holds many classes each year in the outdoor classroom and the trails are enjoyed by all. With all that, Jim and Nikki have given to the people of Elginak, they can also take a great deal of personal pride and satisfaction. In special tribute therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to honor and thank Jim and Nikki Degowski for dedicating their time and effort to improving the beauty of the city of Elginak and the surrounding area and all making it a better place for all who live and visit the town. May health and happiness be in their future. Jim, Nikki, please.
There you go.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, Stray.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Please go.
Thanks.
All right. Next up we have our consent agenda items. Would anyone like to make a motion?
A motion that the Board of Education approves all consent agenda items, including agenda, minutes, personnel items, treasuries reports and bills as listed item today through C. Support.
So I moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you post? That passes. Bringing us to item five A administrative reports. Mr. Melrose is not here this evening. So we will go to Mrs. Lestage.
So we had a great end of the year at Elgin Quinn. Every, oh, I'm sorry. Take a little bit. We had a great, uh, end of the year at Elgin Quinn. Everything went smooth. Field day was super fun. All of our field trips were great. PTO again paid for all the busing on the field trips, keeping it low cost for the students. So that was, that was a really good thing. Um, and actually we're, we're in good shape planning for next year. I was able to eat with, or meet with Mr. Belante about some changes for Elgin Quinn's school lunches next year. So I'm looking forward to that. And also we had a data celebration with the teachers at the end of the school year. We had a really great year of growth at Elgin Quinn.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanders?
Yep. So, um, currently closing up, um, Millside Elementary. Mrs. Lestage, I already thanked PTO. We had great end of the year events. Um, at Field Day this year, they brought in a duck tank. And if you didn't know, Mrs. Wimmer did get up in the duck tank for her final. For her final day after all her years of service. She was retiring this year. Boy, did the kids love that. So just getting Millside ready for the up and coming new year here. Our kind of incoming kindergarten class is growing. We've gotten another two. So our numbers are right around 95 right now. So they're getting closer and closer. So a nice group of kindergarten coming in. We also have about a hundred students entering summer reading academy, summer reading and math academy for the elementary as well. So lots of things going on. This is summer. So it was a great end of the year.
Thank you. And Mrs. Bozell is out. Any board reports? Hearing none. We're, I'll turn it over to Mr. Latos.
Sure, yep. A few items for you. Um, tomorrow morning I will meet with the group that's gonna be doing the bleachers out at the stadium. You know, it, it was a close vote between the, and when we dare a bid, um, between the two companies. And the one that actually had presented to us originally did not get the bid. It went to another group. So, um, with that comes all the meetings that we did before. We gotta redo. So, uh, both Devin and I, and then I have Mitch Landrum and Nick Manska, head football coach coming out. So they can have their input on the press box and some of the bleachers. So, um, that, that project will not however, take place till the fall. They're ready for the planning. So it'll be actually after football season is when they'll break ground on that. Uh, parking lots are set to, they're gonna be doing them in sections here at the high school. Um, so that's gonna, we're actually meeting with them this week to get an idea of what sections we can be in. It'll be kind of an ongoing, uh, project. The good news is it, it is the group that's doing the track as well. So, um, the equipment will be here and it will be, I know they're gonna start working on that as well. So, um, again, just gonna be a busy summer with moving around logistically and trying to get people to park wherever we'll, uh, we'll make do with that.
So the track will be done before?
Yes. Track will be done, track is, will be done this summer before school. Um, Saturday for the, Andy and John were there as, well, at the Muskrat Scramble, our big fundraiser for, uh, Elginak Athletics. And it was a sold out event, a great day, a little bit hot, a little bit hot, but, uh, it was, uh, it was awesome. We had a, you know, it's great to see the alumni come back and now kids, the other kid, used to be kids, but they're now in their twenties and they come back and they're still supporting the programs and, uh, just really cool to see that. It was a great event. I don't have the tally on how much they raised yet, but, uh, I'll give that for you and send it to you at our, bring it to you in July, one of the two. Um, staffing is going well. Um, we have a few positions that I sent you about, but, um, positions that we filled and then a couple others where, um, right now we have an interventionist position that's, um, was occupied by Tiffany Dawson, who moved into the assistant principal role at Elgin Quinn. I have two English positions at the high school, middle school positions. Uh, one of them was occupied by Joe Oglevy, who's moving into the assistant principal position there. Uh, the other one, Christine Castiglione, uh, is off on leave next year. So I have two positions there. Potentially a kindergarten spot. Melissa just shared with you the numbers and it's always kind of a dicey one because, um, we don't wanna run those numbers real high in that classroom. With the transitional kindergarten program, we started, we tried to keep those numbers about 15 to 18, which means all those other kids going to the other, and it was into the other three classes as well, with numbers getting into the nineties, mid. it was into the other three classes as well, with numbers getting into the nineties, mid nineties, and maybe even approach a hundred because we still have a lot of summer to go. We may be looking at the possibility of having to open up a fourth section. So we'll see where that takes us. Good problem to have and a bad problem. It's, it's a good thing. And then I have one other opening for a elementary special education teacher as well. Seems like a lot, but we're just kicking off summer. This is pretty normal, a lot of time. I feel really good about what we've been able to fill up to this point. And then we've got them posted everywhere we know, so we'll hopefully get those posted throughout here, filled throughout the summer. Attendance stipend was something I could, because I saw a couple people catch their attention when Dorothea talked about putting money into the substitute pool and we ended up bumping that account up. We had five long-term subs spots this year and throughout the year with a couple pregnancies and people being announced. Those numbers seem kind of high. However, remember at the beginning of the year, we put that attendance policy out there where if teachers wanted to try to earn by missing zero to one days, two to three days, and then up to five days. And just kind of an idea of, hey, if we could get them to buy it and, you know, make a little bit financially, you know, bonus for that. Very pleased to announce that we had more than half of our teachers qualified on some level between zero and five absences. And that's something we, I promise you, that's not, that's the first time in a long, long time. So it, it worked at least on some level. You know, it's great. We always want our teachers in front of kids. So my plan is to run it back out there again this year if we can have that kind of success with this. So really worked out great for us. And I think in a year where we don't have all those long-term subs, you'll see our total substitute numbers come way down. So that was a good thing. And then Melissa had touched on summer school, which was, we're set to go on that. It starts the week after Fourth of July, runs through August sixth, I think, this year.
August eighth.
August eighth this year. So Monday through Thursday, nine to twelve over at Algonquin. So nice to have a good turnout for that, over a hundred students. And then very last, you should all, at this point, either have picked up your board books with the new policies. I gave them to you in advance, so you could kind of go through those at your leisure. The plan is we will look at those policies, we'll discuss them. Anything, any questions throughout? We will bring it to the board in July and we will take a, take action on adopting the new policies and switching over from the only.
Single reading?
Only one reading, yeah.
And the superintendent was caught on the side of the road on Sunday, supporting the high school.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I was, I was, I was out, yeah, I was out at the New Baltimore Parade and we had our, Doc Brady came through with a truck.
They didn't allow us to throw any candy.
Yeah, I didn't eat any, but it was, it was good. It was a good day. So, yeah, it was, that was kind of cool.
Yeah, it's good seeing you, girl. That was cool. And we have our training coming up.
Right. Yep. I'll do pizza for us on that evening. I think it's five thirty, eight thirty. And we'll send out a reminder on that. It's the day after our board meeting. So I think we're July twenty-second and then the training's gonna be on the twenty-third.
That's on a Tuesday.
That's gonna be Tuesday, yeah.
Day after, okay.
That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next up, we have visitors and their requests, of which we have two this evening. First up is Mr. Dave Allison. Would you like to come? Oh, yeah. As a reminder, Dave, please saw, hold your comments to five minutes. We're listening. We may interact and ask questions.
No problem, Phil. I just realized as I'm watching, the people sign, how many, how much people talk with their hands. So I'm doing this and this, yeah, over here doing this. And pretty soon, who's signing and who's talking? So it's kind of interesting. So one comment, I didn't come to talk about this, but listening to Eric's science presentation, I had the same conclusion that someone else had. When you get fifty scientists in a room, twenty-five have opposing positions, the other twenty-five, I asked them both to write a book. They'll both, to lead them down the path that they want them to go, they'll be totally opposed. So I do have a problem with curriculums and to deny that that doesn't happen, I think we're kidding ourselves. I passed out earlier today the legislation that was passed in Louisiana requiring the Ten Commandments to be put in every public educational facility, right up through college. So anyways, and as I was looking at that, and first of all, if you go online and try to find that, you'll have to wade through five pages on the internet telling you how tragic that decision is, the negative impact that's going to have on society. It's going to be just tragic. There's nuclear attacks, that's prior number one. Posting Ten Commandments in school, that's the second worst calamity that can happen to our country. So there's a little sarcasm, but I'm telling you, there's a little truth to that. So I'm driving to Ohio and this last weekend, and as I'm going down the road, I'm driving, I look at all the people driving down the road. And I realized, back to driver's education, we've all been there. First of all, you went through the curriculum, then the teacher showed you the, some of the rules and regulations, some of the signage and stuff that you had to abide by. But then they took you out on the road and got you experienced what you're gonna do, how you're gonna drive down the road. But then there's one thing that we used to always see, and I don't know, now it's been a while since I understood what happened in driver's education, but what did they do? They showed some slides of some horrific accidents, right? And what they were showing you is, hey, if you go outside these boundaries, if you go outside these rules, this could potentially happen to you. And this is real. This actually happens to people. It's devastating. Okay, so I'm driving down the road. I'm watching people drive. Some people are going five over, some people are following all the rules. Couple of individuals are racing, doing thirty miles an hour over the speed limit, realizing they're risking their own life and other people's lives. But what I did notice is when a trooper would merge onto the highway, reminding them again, there's rules, also, and all brake lights go on. All of a sudden, everyone's driving exactly the way they should drive, what they should do. And so that brings me back to the Ten Commandments. The reason why I believe Louisiana has now required them to put them, because we're saying there's, there's rules. And these rules actually have consequences. And in my opinion, and what I've read in this book where the rules are written down, the consequences of that have been end up worse than those accidents that we saw in driver's education. But yet, we as a community, we as educators, we deny that information from them. Be no different than just handing people a license and go on the road and make the best of it, figure it out somehow, right? It'd be chaotic. It'd be, it'd be tragic. So I'm just asking, I know the school has said, hey, we look at what, what our school policy is going to be. I think there's arts and good things happening in school, no doubt. I appreciate what I've seen, some of the presentations we saw, especially this evening, some of the contributions that people are making to make the school, make this community better, make our students better. I'm not denying. And I'm encouraged by that. But like I've always said, I think we can do better. And I think we're denying the students that opportunity. I'm really happy Louisiana's taken that stand. As you know, St. Clair County recently passed a resolution for supporting homeschoolers. Why is that? Because homeschoolers, they, they feel that they have a certain standard, a certain version that they want us to bring their children up in. And they don't want to be forced to expose themselves to some things. Think back before the Ten Commandments were taken out of schools. Remember the tragedies, the killings and the stabbings, and their drug problems we had? And, and kids coming to school dressed up like cats and having litter box in the bathrooms and kids couldn't remember what their gender was. Remember how that was when, when we had the Ten Commandments in the schools? Remember, remember how bad it was?
No.
Oh, wait a minute, wait, that all happened after we took that out. So I'm here to say that Eric's got a hard task teaching kids science when we can't even decide how many genders there are. So defining truths and getting resolutionary skills, I think, again, I think to deny these truths, we're not helping our children. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And next we have Ms. Ilytash.
Good evening. I was contacted last week to be informed that one of the school board members here was arrested this past year for drunk driving. I have not obtained the police report yet, but I will, and I'll be bringing it back at the next meeting. And I'm gonna read it. Because what I heard is that not only were they arrested for drunk driving, but that they hit a golf cart with children in it and then left the scene of an accident. So we're here talking, it breaks my heart because you hear all these wonderful things going on. And then we were here just a couple months ago and one of your teachers, vice principal, has her naked pictures on her Snapchat. Oh, is that policy in the book? You were gonna tell me. And so we keep coming, I've been coming here a whole year, never heard about this drunk driving case, never heard about the, we only heard about it all on social media. And, you know, so if, we need to teach children they're hungry for virtue and for rules and discipline. And I'm not even a parent, but I've heard that there's a right way and a wrong way and we want our children to flourish. So I will see you next month.
Thank you. Next, we have our action items. First item is seven A, the science curriculum that was presented. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Make a motion that the Board approves the Earth and Science Curriculum from Kendall Hunt Publishing Company. Kendel Hunt has presented the amount of seventy-seven, seventy-six, oh, six.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions, comments?
This is the proven open sign that goes just.
Yes.
This is just a one-year to see if they're still gonna, to get the information they felt they wanted to get.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you post?
Abstain? Abstain?
Can you abstain?
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I just would like mine. I feel that's all.
Yep. Understood. Next is MHSAA membership resolution. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution as presented for membership at the Michigan High School Athletics Association for the 2024-25 school year. Complete copy of the resolution shall be attached to the original of these minutes.
Support that. Moved and supported. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you post? That passes. Next up is tentative agreements. Would anyone like to make a motion? I'll take that one. It suggests that the Board of Education approve the 2024-25 agreements effective July first, 2024 for the following. A E A teacher personnel, local five seventeen M custodian personnel, E S P personnel, and P twenty personnel.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you post? That passes as well. Up next is seven D, resolution for approval of the final budget amendment for twenty-three, twenty-four that we discussed earlier at our six fifteen.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution for Budget Amendment Act Number Two is presented as the final budget amendment for the general fund, school service fund, special revenue fund budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. A copy will be attached in minutes.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you post? That passes as well. Next up, resolution for approval of the twenty-four, twenty-five budgets.
I'll take that one. Suggests the motion that the Board of Education approve the general appropriation resolution for adoption of the general fund, school service fund, and special revenue fund budget for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five as presented. Copy of the resolution shall be attached to the original of these minutes.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions, further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you post? That passes. And last but not least, item seven F, resolution certifying the millage rates for twenty-four, twenty-five that Dorothea also presented earlier.
I motion that the Board of Education approves the resolution as presented, which certifies that for twenty-two, fourteen, eighteen, point zero, 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 zero mills, shall be levied upon operating purchases upon non-homes, non-1200 agricultural property further for the year twenty-twenty-four. Two point six, zero, zero mills shall be levied upon all property for debt repayment purposes. Six point zero, 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 zero mills upon personal commercial properties. And one point eight, five, nine, five mills for sinking fund shall be levied on a taxable value of all classifications of property located within the school district. Complete copy of this resolution shall be attached to the original of these minutes.
Support. Moved and supported. Any questions, comments? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you post? That passes. Ms. Chapa, repeat.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you post? All right. Have a great evening.